Like to call this school district Sturgeon Bay regular board meeting to order for Wednesday, July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Could everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours. One nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, could you do the roll call, please? Commissioner Starr?
Here.
Commissioner Meyer here. Commissioner Hawes?
Here.
Commissioner Jenner John is excused. Commissioner Stefani?
Here.
Commissioner Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Howard? Commissioner Scholz?
Here.
And Commissioners Burnham?
Here. All right. Thank you very much for that. You have board packet and you have in front of you the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
To accept the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hawes, second by Commissioner Meyer to adopt the agenda as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're to the public comments section. I've seen nobody from the public here tonight on this wonderful July evening. So I think we can skip down the consent agenda. So the consent agenda approve consists of the following from your board packet. We have the approval of the June minutes of the regular meeting of June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Approved the June bills in your packet, which Jake so nicely presented. Approved grants and donations. We have forty dollars tied to marketplace for teacher incentive activities. Fifty dollars by Andrew Hansen for the elementary playground. Five hundred dollars from John and Big Fumbisty for the Robert H. Nickel Auditorium Project. The following Raybrook Grants were received. Clipper Sailing Club. High School Hope's Squad Program and the Tech Ed Visual Arts Up- Upgrades. We have in one resignation to accept Lisa Oso College. Is resigning from her special education teaching position. And when five year accepts seclusion and restraint in a report, we have seen some stuff on that before, but. Act one twenty five requires that schools report annually to the school board by September one about any incidents in the previous school year. Most incidents of seclusions and restraint restraint in school districts typically occur at the elementary level. Director Ferry has prepared the annual reports summarizing the information of the past year with a small number of students. That report is included in the packet which you have. A motion to approve the consent agenda as presented is recommended. Also like to thank Lisa for her time here with our district. So can I have a motion to approve the consent?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Right. Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Spurka, second by Commissioner Schultz to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion?
Real quick, Mike, I just want to point out Ashley Lalazza, our bookkeeper, provides the checks. They're all involved, that checklist. I appreciate the compliments as provided.
That's right, your whole department, that's whoever doing it, that's good, that's good, good to see him. Good. Hearing nothing else, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're down to the operations agenda, which the first thing we have here, we have it's that magical mystical time of year where we approve teachers. So.
Here we do indeed, all right, well, go with two A's. They have four teacher candidates for the board tonight. Two, as you see, are one-year contracts, so we'll see basically how that goes. And then the other two are beginning with moving forward with still all the usual probationary teacher measures as we are. The two A. Please to bring forward here Deborah Nussbaum as a new ID autism teacher at Sunrise Elementary. Deb has a wealth of experience as a special education teacher and director, both in Wisconsin and internationally, including pretty impressive list Bolivia, Ukraine, Senegal, Vietnam, and the Marshall Islands. Deb is a fluent Spanish speaker and strong student advocate for responsible inclusion. Is also a doctoral student and a true lifelong learner. References spoke very highly of her creativity, her leadership, and being a flexible team player. As a result, they'd be excited to welcome her to the team. A motion to approve Deborah Nussbaum, the Sunrise Special Education Teacher, for a one-year contract for the two thousand and twenty five, twenty six school year is recommended.
I move to approve Deborah Nussbaum as a Sunrise Special Ed Teacher for one-year contract for two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year.
I'll second. We have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Hawes, second by Commissioner Starr to approve Deborah Nussbaum as the Sunrise Special Education Teacher for a one-year contract for the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We, motion, motion is carried, approved. Next, two B, elementary art teacher for one-year contract?
I have a super quick question for Principal Mrs. Smollett. Mrs. Smollett, our, just our recently approved candidate worked several places, including the Marshall Islands. Do you know anyone that once worked in the Marshall Islands?
I did.
You did? Early in your career, all right, just making sure I'm paying attention here. No, there's your, well, Sturgeon Bay Admin Team Trivia of the Night. All right, back on script, Principal Katie Smollett and Principal Katie DeVillers are pleased to recommend Lisa Lagerstrom for the elementary teacher position. At Sunrise and Sawyer Elementary Schools for the upcoming year. She has a bachelor's degree in art in both computer and fine arts from California State University in Long Beach. And an associate's degree in two-dimensional design from a community college in California. She has a plethora of experience as a K twelve art teacher in a variety of educational environments, most recently as middle school art teacher in Green Bay. Been a substitute teacher in both Wisconsin and California. Her positive attitude, willingness to help any capacity and dependability are all qualities that she will bring to her everyday work for us. Pending of board approval, the team would be excited to have her join as our elementary art teacher at Sturgeon Bay. Motion to approve Lisa Powers Lagerstrom as an elementary art teacher for one-year contract for the two thousand and twenty five, twenty six school year is recommended.
I'll make a motion to approve Lisa Lagerstrom as elementary art teacher for one-year contract for twenty five, twenty six school.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hawes, excuse me, Commissioner Starr, second by Commissioner Hawes to approve Lisa Lagerstrom as the elementary art teacher for a one-year contract, two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're down to a fifth grade teacher.
Yes, two C, Sunrise Team is pleased to bring forward Emily Tonan as a new fifth grade teacher. Emily recently graduated from UW-Green Bay, summa cum laude. Her cooperating teacher was very impressed by her ability to confidently lead a classroom and her work ethic. Many of her former students from where she taught or student taught at Howard Swamaco wrote recommendations for her and also spoke of her kindness to them. Excited to have her join the Sunrise Team. A motion to approve Emily Tonan as a fifth grade teacher at Sunrise Elementary School, beginning with the two thousand and twenty five, twenty six school year is recommended.
I move to approve Emily Tonan as a fifth grade teacher at Sunrise School, beginning with the twenty five, twenty six school year.
Second. The second verse, oh, Mr. Schultz. All right, we have, we have a. We have a motion by Commissioner Pruli, second by Commissioner Schultz to approve Emily Tonan as the fifth grade teacher at Sunrise School, beginning with the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're down to point D, Spanish teacher.
Yes, both Principal Lurbe and Principal Smollett bring this forward. Ms. Marie Galan has been a teacher both overseas and here in the U.S. for a total of fourteen years. She earned a degree in social studies, French, and Spanish. She graduated from the University of, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, in Spain, where she's originally from. For the past three years, she's taught Spanish one, two, three, and three, I believe that's supposed to be, at Tri County High School in Walcott, Indiana. However, she was recently married and relocated to Kiwanee with her husband. Ms. Galan was very involved and active at her previous school. She led the Spanish club, supported the book club, and participated in different community organizations. Ms. Galan stated during the interview process, she welcomed the opportunity to be part of our world language club, as well as participate in other opportunities in the building and in our district. Mr. Haskins, Maria's former principal in Indiana, was extremely positive when describing Maria's time at Tri County Schools. He said, quote, "Inside the classroom, Ms. Galan has brought a high level of knowledge of her native language to our students. Her ability to instruct Spanish has been very refreshing to observe. One of the things that has impressed me the most is Maria's ability to reach all levels of learners through rigorous instruction and to create positive relations with students," end quote. Galan has received high praise and her principal shared that he, along with other staffers, had sad to see her go, but wish her very best as she comes here to Wisconsin. During the interview process, it was evident that Maria has a passion for students to learn and grow. As a native Spanish speaker, she has a deep knowledge of both fully written and oral language, as well as the culture of many Spanish-speaking countries that she'll be able to share with students as they learn the language. A motion to approve, approve Maria Galan, a secondary Spanish teacher at the high school, middle school, beginning with the two thousand and twenty five, twenty six school year is recommended.
I move to approve Maria Galan as the secondary Spanish teacher at the high school, middle school, beginning with the twenty twenty ten, twenty ten school year. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hawes, second by Commissioner Cruz to approve Maria Galan as the secondary Spanish teacher at the high school and middle school, beginning with the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year. Further discussion by anyone?
I find that that write-up of her makes me want to take Spanish, that's awesome.
Yeah, that and the, the earlier Marshall Islands thing, I mean, we, this is great. This is great to have those different perspectives of these new teachers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we are down to point three, approve Associate at Sawyer School.
Yes, there's one associate for us since tonight's agenda. Principal Katie DeVillers is pleased to recommend Desiree Lambrecht for the kindergarten teacher associate position at Sawyer Elementary School, starting this two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year. Desiree has an associate degree in early childhood education. She has eighteen years of experience working as a preschool teacher. Desiree's calm presence, patience, and flexibility were highlighted by her former supervisor. Her dedication toward providing compassionate care to the students and family she served were also shared, and something that should serve her well in her role as a teacher associate in kindergarten. Desiree is thrilled at the possibility of working with kindergarten students and looking forward to using her positive energy to support our students at Sawyer in her new role. Pending board approval, we're excited to welcome Desiree to Sawyer and congratulate her on her new position. Motion to approve Desiree Lambrecht as a teacher associate at Sawyer Elementary School, beginning with the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year is recommended.
Let me get a motion.
I move to approve Desiree Lambrecht as a teacher associate at Sawyer School, beginning with the twenty five, twenty six school year.
I'll second. We have a motion by Commissioner Cruz, second by Commissioner Starr to approve Desiree Lambrecht as the teacher associate at Sawyer School, beginning with the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So now we are to point, we have approval of coaches for high school track and girls soccer. High school track is the first one for you.
Yes. Principal Lurbe, athletic director, we recommend Zach Elbers as the high school track coach. That has been with the high school, middle school team the last three seasons and assistant coach. Zach, as some of you know, also has helped out with football at high school the past four seasons and teaches tech ed. A motion to approve Zach Elbers as the high school track coach, beginning with the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six season is recommended.
I move to approve Zach Elbers as a high school track coach for twenty five, twenty six.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Spurka, second by Commissioner Schultz to approve Zach Elbers as the high school track coach, beginning with the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're down to girls soccer.
Yes, Principal Lurbe, athletic director, we recommend Shane Olson as our new high school head girls soccer coach. Some of you know Shane has been with the program the past seven seasons as a volunteer coach. He played a role in the youth program in our community prior to volunteering to help coach our high school girls. Motion to approve Shane Olson as our head girls soccer coach, beginning with the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six season is recommended.
Move to approve Shane Olson as the head girls soccer coach, going with the twenty, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six season.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schultz, second by Commissioner Starr to approve Shane Olson as the head girls soccer coach, beginning with the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year. Further discussion?
I was just wondering, do you happen to know what kind of applicants we receive for either of these positions?
We did not receive a lot of applicants, Principal Lurbe, you want to come on down and give the specifics? I can say maybe a little more so, although as a couple of you know, my daughter was totally brand new to soccer. She really enjoyed talking to Coach Olson and felt, you know, took an interest in all the girls and explained things very well. Not sure on the number, I think it may have been one applicant on the track coach side, and I apologize if it ended up being one or two on soccer.
Yeah, we had very many, one for track, and I believe we had two for, for girls soccer. Both of them have been a part of the programs over the last nine or 10 years, though.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have, I think both of these people are going to do a really good job. I don't know Zach as well as I know Shane. Shane's going to be an excellent coach, he's done this for a long time. But I was just wondering if, if we're getting more engagement with, with these coaching vacancies or, you know, if it's kind of stable.
Yeah, it would be, it would be great to increase that and try a lot of different ways of doing that.
Yeah.
Feels like it's one of those things that's not.
Yeah.
We're not getting more as time goes on, unfortunately.
Same, twenty percent of the work being done by, or a hundred percent of the work being done by the same person, yeah.
We've been fortunate that I think we've had good people, but not a lot of people.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent, so any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So now we're down for the Strategic Action Plan and Priorities Draft for two thousand and twenty five, twenty twenty six, again, that's the information.
Yeah, informational item, I won't read the, what, six paragraphs or so I prepared, you've seen that before, plus you see this on an annual basis. Basically, again, for anyone, whether legal women voters or others, we'll give them a shout out for monitoring even our summer meetings. The board knows going back to when we had an annual retreat back in twenty seventeen. Which is starting to sound like a while ago already, right? That we tried to categorize work and have high priorities in three main areas, right? Teaching and learning, as a school district should, I'll just hit briefly on that in a moment. Community engagement was kind of our second bucket or pillar, if you will, and then what initially were going to be kind of pillar or buckets, three and four, we combined into finance, facilities, and operations. So under finance, facilities, and operations, then I'll work back up the page, right? Short and long-term planning is the one bullet point, the other dealing with attracting and retaining quality staff. Again, should parallel what you've seen in recent years, right? We're not all of a sudden going in a completely different direction, even though, again, we'll talk a little later in the meeting in the report section about some of that communication. Community engagement, we've kind of gone back and forth on one or two sub bullet points. The first one is pretty standard from the last couple of years with some minor tweaks, and then the second bullet point, I made sure to call it specifically Communication and Marketing Plan. Talked about that in some of our workshops, and the board had approved us working with the Donovan Group, right? We've talked about Brian Nicholas helping us out with some things. So I thought that that was appropriate for this year to have its own bullet point. And then kind of finishing back where we started, right? High priority as it needs to be for the district under teaching and learning. These are that first one that usually has some sort of, you know, flair, most recently on the literacy front. And now, as the team and I have talked about it, we thought, well, we really need to call out not only continued academic efforts, but some also some things around social, emotional learning and behavioral growth, right? The board has talked in formal meetings, as well as workshops, about some of those challenges and how we can work from the little kids to the big kids. Be able to focus on what needs to happen for them in their classroom. So that's the first bullet point, so that's kind of the main update to this list for you for this year. The second one's still dealing with those guiding questions around professional learning communities, and we'll bore you with that right now. And then the third one, really around those instructional practices that our classroom staff do day in and day out throughout the school year. And then you see kind of a little bit of an update, again, similar in some ways to what we've had the last couple of years, but kind of tweak that way. So again, really, that's the focus, as we all know, it helps us focus in on those main things and make sure the staff, when they come back in August, aren't going to be surprised as teachers with, oh, boy, here's a new list of a dozen initiatives, which we know isn't effective, right? The list needs to be short, it needs to be targeted, but we still need to tweak this each year. So some of this information, as the board well knows, we'll talk about, not only in regular meetings through the principal reports, but also in some of the learning sessions. But that's, that's kind of the update I have for you. Does anyone have just a quick question or comment based on that tonight? Otherwise, again, this will come back to you, kind of for the board staff approval, right? As boards, this current board and boards before you have said, yes, trust the educators, but at the same time, you are appropriate oversight. Want to make sure you have a chance to be okay with that.
Otherwise, President Stefani, that's all we've got on it.
Okay, good. Point six, approval, annual public notice factor standards, we see this every year.
Yeah, so every year, I will, because of where it comes from, just kind of go through, not every sentence, but the paragraphs here. So going back to the two thousand and fifteen to seventeen state budget, also known as the two thousand and fifteen Act fifty five. There were several notice requirements for school districts that were added. Those items included academic standards, school report cards, ranking levels, educational options, and special needs voucher programs, right? So in some form, that's basically all still around, even if some of the labels have updated. Next paragraph, again, Association of School Boards has reminded us that at some point, and I will read especially the first part of this. School boards are reminded that they must include an item on the agenda of the first school board meeting of the school year. In other words, that first board meeting after July one, that clearly identifies student academic standards that will be in effect for the year. Again, you see kind of the, the dot, 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 and key points there, rather than make you read pages and pages. Third paragraph, I will comment, even though it's just two sentences. We know that once a new curriculum for a particular academic area is then adopted, the curriculum stays in place really until a change is approved at a later date. And again, the requirement that we need to notify the public annually, the standards began then back with that budget, really, almost a decade ago. In gathering feedback from various individuals and in line with our discussion on the topic in past years, it continues to appear to be the clearest way of communicating that we follow what we call Sturgeon Bay standards. Working in recent years, that has involved Wisconsin academic standards for the most part. But we know calling, and again, I've talked, especially some years in the past, calling them Sturgeon Bay standards does give us the flexibility to be able to address any areas that may come up and cause concern with our school community. And also avoids the perception that we have to adopt something without any flexibility to adapt if concerns would come up really at the national or state level. Again, there's curriculum information for the public posted on the Sturgeon Bay School District website and can be accessed with that link, where people can look at curricular information either by academic area. Or they can focus as kids are quite young and progress their way up through the years. So kudos to several staff members who've worked on that over the years. Also, you see the link there, so I'll just finish with the final sentence of the write-up, a motion to give the required annual notice pertaining to academic standards utilized in the school district of Sturgeon Bay for the twenty five, twenty six school year is recommended.
I'll make a motion to give the required annual notice pertaining to academic standard utilized in the Sturgeon Bay. School district for the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year.
Second. Right, we have a motion by Commissioner Spurka, second by Commissioner Starr to give the required annual notice pertaining to academic standards utilized in the school district of Sturgeon Bay for the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six school year. Further discussion? Hearing down all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now we're down to point seven, Board Review, Board Policy Review.
Yeah, so as Ann Denise and I talked about this, we thought, you know, probably a way to tee up what in essence is almost four pages that follow. Are to kind of clarify, not as much for the board, but maybe anyone in the public tracking this, you know, what are technical corrections? We see the different type of revisions. So kind of to start out with, I'll take from this first paragraph or two. It says, Neola, from time to time, will issue an update of only technical corrections when necessary. But this change, the regular update, contains more substantive policy issues, and we'll get to that after this batch. For review, that would require consideration by and approval by the board. Importantly, really, what technical changes or corrections are, is they're technical changes that don't materially alter the policy's intent, but rather provide more minor changes that improve, in essence, quality and our consistency with the policy. And I'm going to skip the next part of that paragraph, go to the last sentence. It's the belief that the change will help streamline the process of review and adoption, right? So we still want to make sure the board is aware and anyone in the public is aware with these technical corrections, but it's not the type of thing where we're wrestling with more substantive information as we do from time to time. Kind of taking that forward, really to the top of the next page, all right? Really, it talks about how the person in my position, right, or technically, right, designated, authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through normal rulemaking procedures. Technical corrections are those corrections to policy language or construction that do not reflect a policy decision or substantive consideration by the board, such as correction of a typographical or grammatical error, inclusion or correction of statutory citations, which you know comes up quite a bit. Renumbering sections, which happens on occasion, combining of policies or similar actions. So really, it's up to the district administrator, make sure we inform the board of those changes. And so what I thought we would do is, and I, like I said, map this out. I'm not going to read every one of these, but we see, starting with the, you know, the oh, one, five, two officers, oh, one, six, four, right, kind of that batch. And then working our way down to the one thousand series, you see a couple. You see several in the two thousand series, really around student things. You see a few in the three or two in the three thousand series. Four thousand vacancies, talks a little bit about rejecting some things in the five thousand, updating attendance. Ironically, the attendance policy came up with something we're working on for DPI today. You see some other five thousands that kind of go down, really the whole top half of that next page. In six thousands, you see some just corrections, for example, of a budget hearing, purchasing, assistive tech, et cetera, seven thousand. Eight thousand series are the last, those next couple, and the very bottom of that page deals with the nine thousand series. Then we see really what continues, number eight, Board Policy Review, thirty four point two technical corrections. Again, another batch of those technical corrections, take us through this page and the next. Again, I'll just do very similar to keep it moving. You see zero, one, six, eight point one, dealing with meeting minutes is the start of that list. And then we have three in the two thousand series from different non-discrimination down to interscholastic athletics. Then we see a few in the three thousand series, as well as four thousand around gifts, professional meetings, personal property, et cetera, right? There's a few where not necessary, that we can reject, others just quick wording pieces. We see the three thousand and four thousand series about privacy protections. Uh, we see the three thousand and four thousand series about privacy protections. Uh, fifty one thirty withdrawal, dropout from school. We see that there's uh an error that was corrected there. A little bit of information around current terminology before fifty two hundred point oh one, a full-time student. Promotion, placement and retention, those do come up more substantively in other ways. Like around literacy and from one grade level to the next. This one was a quick one for fifty four ten. And then the last page of this batch, uh we see fifty five hundred student code of conduct. Some incorrect legal citations have been removed. We see three in the six thousand series from investment income down to fund balance. We see Q there eighty four fifty, right? And then uh the next, what, four of them, all in the eight thousand series from. Personal protective equipment down to religious activities and observances, and the very last one from the second technical corrections list, ninety one fifty. Either with school visit. So again, those are there. Anyone from the public ask question? Again, the board knows how this works. Uh, but we just updated those things without anything too substantive, which we'll get into in the next batch. President Stefani, does that work for us?
I think it works great.
Alright, should I keep it move, keep it moving? Alright, now go to our more traditional uh review, uh thirty four point two from the regular update. This, as the board knows, is the first of two readings, uh which most of these uh go into the consent agenda for next month unless someone has a particular thing. Or we notice something whether tonight or after tonight. Uh, I will start with nine A, policies zero one zero zero on definitions. Really, uh a new definition of school district classifications was added, so we made that up. Uh, letter B, policy zero one four four point five. Uh, we see uh board member behavior communications code of conduct. And talks about some clarifying language has been added to several provisions as well as a direct reference to conflict of interest in. Next up, nine C, zero one six six point one dealing with consent agenda. Uh, just some options have been added based on practical usage of the consent agenda. And we know uh we've used that the last decade or so. It's a little different than what we once did from board reading, policy readings to a couple of things. Going on to the next page, one, four, six, one, unrequested leaves of absence slash fitness for duty. There was some additional enforcement language that was added. Letter E, twenty four forty oh one, we could reject dealing with summer or interim school attendance. F, policy twenty five two two dealing with library media centers. Really, I'll kind of jump to both the middle of that first sentence, dealing with challenges to materials are brought forward by persons with actual personal knowledge of the content. Therefore able to articulate concerns, right? So. Want people to know that this needs to be handled correctly. We've all seen the news stories, right? But there's all sorts of concerns. I think we certainly want to give our district librarian or library media center specialist Holly Sully credit for several years ago. Making sure we had a process that if a parent had a concern, whether at the school level. Uh, about a book in a classroom, which is a little different than the library or in the library, that we had a process that they can clearly follow. To point out exactly what the concern is, resolve it, you know, as easily as with the teacher or the principal. And then it kind of goes up the ladder from there. So we really haven't had an issue with this. If someone were to bring forward a concern, I'm quite comfortable with our process compared to what I'm hearing happens in some districts. So just good news for the board there. Uh, back to the list, G, policy thirty one twenty oh four, employment of substitutes. Deal some different uh outlining, some options there. Uh, we know that, you know, as long as I'm on a guest, we're always looking for substitute teachers. Anyone knows of someone or happens to be listening to this day, I'll talk to Mrs. Demese, right, right at. Uh, policy thirty one twenty oh eight, employment of personnel for co-curricular extracurricular activities. Uh, talks about a reference to issuance of reasonable assurances notification. Uh, because that deals with some other things like we have to do for hourly staff and so forth. So clarification there. So on this next one, um, we have policy thirty four thirty one and forty four thirty one dealing with two different categories. So it's a yes on the thirty four thirty one side, really not uh available on the support staff side. As far as the updating of employee leaves, it's updated to offer the option to add sick leave and personal leave time off. As the board knows, right, we've done some things with professional staff on the PTO side, separate from uh support staff. Letter J, uh dealing with uh the policies here around employees, sick leave and so forth. We see at forty four, sorry, thirty four thirty two, forty four thirty two, some options for the use of a benefit for for certain types of appointments for clarifying within those. K forty one twenty four, notice of reasonable assurance of employment. Revision clarifies benefits are not available based on just services performed for the district. Sounds that reasonable insurance piece comes up again. Uh, policy forty one forty termination and resignation. This revision offers optional language allowing an employee to resign before being terminated. I think good practice in most cases, as long as we're not talking about illegal unethical behavior where we have to involve the DPI or something. Uh, policy forty two thirteen, student supervision and welfare, additional language has been added regarding the expected standard of care for support staff. Making some language consistent there. Flipping over next page, letter N, policy fifty one twelve with entrance age. Recognizes parental right to opt out of immunization, to file a statement regarding this choice in lieu of immunization records. We know that that um is, it is starting to become more popular, right? Post-COVID probably more attention to again. Next policy fifty three ten oh one dealing with uh, it's a replacement policy, I should point out, for emergency nur- nursing services. It's provided to more fully incorporate requirements of different regulations regarding development content and review of emergency nursing services. Next up, fifty four ten promotion placement and retention. This was updated to include a cross-reference. With the promotion and retention requirements specific to Wisconsin's reading readiness legal requirements, and we know we've heard a lot about the last couple of years. Fifty four eleven, third grade promotion and retention, again, dealing with uh really a number of those things. Uh, but specific to various parental notification provisions required by statute. Fifty four sixty four, uh early graduation, this was updated, provide additional options for evaluation approval of the early graduation requests. We know we don't have a lot of them, but it is something we have from time to time. Have a process for our handle lowest here through the high school. Fifty five oh five, academic honesty, like this is one of those things we'll hear more and more about in the coming years. This policy was updated to specify with respect to student use of AI, right, or artificial intelligence tools. Students are expected to properly uh attribute any content, right? So still about citing their source. Even though it's getting a little bit more challenging to stay on top of that, not only for young people, but for adults, quite frankly, I think. A lot of us in our day jobs, right, come across different things around AI too. It's certainly not just a school issue. This is one of those, I think, I wouldn't call it a hot button issue, but it's an issue we're going to continue to hear and see a lot more about in the coming weeks, months and years. Uh, fifty five thirty, student use or possession of intoxicants, drugs or paraphernalia. We see update to reflect additional items included within the pivoted substances and also to include look-alike substances. Policy seventy four forty oh three, small unrammed unmanned aircraft systems or drones, right? For for short title was modified to include that term drones, since that's what most people call them. It was also, language was updated to be consistent with the WIAA policy and procedures, which have some thoughts around drones. And WIAA events. Next up, seventy four fifty, property inventory, again, dealing with GASB standards. Uh, and Education Department General Administration regulations, right, those Edgar things around different uh assets, grants, so on and so forth. Seventy four fifty five, accounting system for capital assets, another revision, this was added to appropriately. Uh, appropriate useful life for capital assets based on, again, GABB standards. Seventy four sixty, conservation of natural material resources. Uh, this was updated, provide the board with an outline of an energy conservation evaluation implementation policy. Seventy five thirty oh two, staff and school officials use of personal communication uh devices. There's some options within the policy that were clarified. Eighty one twenty, dealing with volunteers, this was updated, reflect the requirement that volunteers driving district-owned vehicles. Are still obligated to be under contract and meet driver requirements. Um, and Mrs. Demese is involved with rotation with all the different volunteers, whether they're working with, I don't know, flipper glaze, to all sorts of different things. That also does background checks. Sometimes people wonder about that. Um, so just thought I'd mention that in passing here. Eighty four twenty, school safety, policy was updated to reflect the crime reporting requirements. This is uh, this is a new piece enacted by the legislature, effective for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Basically, for us, Principal Nervy was working with uh SRO Generon to look at the information and what. Hits a certain level, thankfully, it wasn't a bunch of stuff for us by any means uh to be reported to DPI. I think we're probably going to see more in the news about this because I'm guessing the people that wanted to see this at the state level. Were looking for information, at least in some communities, and probably aren't going to see the level of reporting that they thought they would. Uh, because as you can probably all appreciate, from a school standpoint, we don't necessarily know. I mean, we know what's going on with our people, but as far as what gets to the point of being pursued by EPA and what gets to what level, that's really not from us. And so wouldn't surprise me if uh in the next few years, they changed this a few different ways to give the information they want. And probably pull us out of the loop, but time will tell. Uh, policy eighty five hundred food services, right? We see some things on this regularly. Policy was revised based on direct feedback from the DPI school nutrition team. Um, and again, this is one of several policies we made sure that Jenny Spooty was involved in on, so we make sure we make note of that. Thanks to Andy and Denise for giving me that. Um, the next few fall into that category, so I think we have a group of five, if I recall here, that Jenny took a look at for us, so. Policy eighty five ten with wellness, this was revised based again on DPI school nutrition team, Jenny took a look at this. Same with the next one, eighty five thirty one, free and reduced price meals. Again, you see that same uh team at the DPI level, Jenny took a look. Eighty five forty vending machines, um. Once upon a time, there were more vending machines. We made a lot of money off of that or off of that to pay for student T-shirts and all sorts of things and then. You know, all those wellness standards came away or came around and a lot of that vending dried up, but they still do exist in some respect. So you see eighty five forty, back to my notes here, vending machines, Jenny took a look at that for us as well. And the final one that Jenny Spooty helped us take a look at, eighty five fifty, competitive food sales. Again, you see the information from the DPI level and you see the different updates there Jenny helped us with. And the final one, I know you're sad to see it come. Ninety one fifty one, use of cameras and other recording devices in locker rooms. Oh, yes, we just want to do that. Policy you see was revised to include additional language concerning media presence in locker rooms and the prohibition of recording devices. Uh, which again, not that kids don't take uh devices into the bathroom or locker room, but of course, they need to be reminded their signage, right? They shouldn't be operating that for obvious reasons, et cetera. That's the badge I have for you, President Stefani.
Really good, nice work, yeah.
Make it visit to me.
Get some water.
Okay.
You can get some water. Alright, then we are down to reports. We, you know, in July, we do a press version of reviews, so. I think Jake, you're up, right?
Uh, I did a summary of state budget, how that might affect us. Um, haven't dug in much more than what's uh what you see. Uh, so I guess questions. Uh, concerns, uh, the, the big. Good news, we got more dollars. Bad news, the piece about equalization aid taxes stuck. So uh, we are working through, we are in contact uh with Eleanor. From the Peninsula Pulse, uh she's going to do an article, two, three. Uh, the state budget, how it affects us uh in their taxes. The other piece, um, sounds like the city is doing a reassessment this year, um. They not reach out, but we do have citizens of the city on staff and so. We are aware of that, so it'll probably get slid into the messages as well, so.
It seems like it isn't as bad as what we were talking about a few weeks ago. It's not as bad. Yeah, that's what I.
Circle back, yeah, no, I know you didn't.
Not Sturgeon Bay, I'm talking the state budget.
Yeah, uh, yes, uh, it gives us uh some flexibility on a number of levels, uh. Uh, you know, whether we're looking at increasing our teacher base wage to forty five thousand dollars. The second part of the plan we talked about this spring, uh whether it's. Uh, looking at potentially underlevying uh to help out with the, the, the tax levy. Uh. So, yeah, it, it presents some, some good flexibility for us, uh, for sure.
Very good that we're giving our product, uh, in or.
And I think both of us, they have got the reassessment letter, right? You have state budget, you have that, and if you're aware of the general aid thing, it's like, oh boy, what is that? Me, you know, just as it all lines up. Um, Jake mentioned Eleanor, it's Eleanor Corbin from the Pulse. She had reached out to me, believe it or not, she's working on uh an article about Neola policies. Right? And I said, well, Eleanor, thank you. I've only had one other person I can think of in my eleven years here actually reached out to me offering to help with policy. And that that was her focus, but she said, she just thought it was interesting because she's from outside the area. On that indoor county now, all of the school districts contract with Neola and she's learning that, boy, they, they've really grown, not only in the state of Wisconsin, but elsewhere. So she and I had a nice, and we talked for forty minutes, that's the most I've ever talked about Neola probably. Uh, this week, and then when she asked, anything else or anything else you have going on, I said, well. Uh, you know, as usual, not telling you what to do, but you're pretty good about, you know, and others, right? Others, temples, others have after story ideas and so forth. And I said, you know what? I'd really recommend, if not an article, perhaps an article series on the state budget. You've kind of been following that, right? She said, yeah, yeah. And I said, I think a topic that is of a, you know, special interest to really. Any taxpayer, and one could argue, even if a person isn't a property owner, and if they pay rent. It's going to impact them too when the property owner then theoretically has to modify what the rent is. Uh, and so talked a little bit about equalization, right, or general school, you know, that type of thing. And she said, oh, this is. This is very interesting. Yes, I'm definitely going to do that and. Trying to think what day this week we spoke. She emailed me before the day was over and included Jake, because I said, well, we'd both be happy to help her. And she said, yes, actually, I want to start working on that article sooner rather than later. So probably I'm thinking that week next week. Uh, Jake and I will connect further with her. I've sent her a couple of the articles, that whether it's Wisconsin Public Radio or whatever that are showing up in the feeds we get every day. So she can learn about it. Uh, she already understands uh that how this impacts, say, Gibraltar, for example. Is very different than how it will impact the school communities of Sturgeon Bay and Southern North. Uh, so we'll kind of work through that, uh, but yeah, so she was very open to that, so we'll do what we can to communicate about that. And I think uh before hopping into my mind here, uh what Jake said about like, you know, that whole push-pull, we often talk about levying, right? Underlevying or what's the ramifications? So I think probably, you know, that we would want to give you some options. As we get to that point in October, like, okay, you know, what are the pros and cons? Right? Because it's not going to be as simple as, oh, this option has all pros and no cons, and these, you and I know that's not how it works, or it wouldn't need to be decided in our love. Hmm, but what are pros and cons of being here or, you know, levying to our authority or what have you? So kind of working through that and hopefully at least trying to communicate to the public how this all works. Well, at least I'll give it our best of.
I think it's so great that you're doing that. That's awesome.
Yes, as I told someone this week, you know, aside. Uh, in fact, it was in talking with Eleanor, I said, aside from ramping up with the usual school year stuff, like, okay. Everyone wants a safe, successful school year. We need kids to focus on learning and growing and all that. I said, as someone who's now done this work a while, like, in my mind, at, based on what we know right now. The number one topic I think is going to be this, because it's going to impact, you know, communities across the state. Yes, there's a few outliers like I've been, but most are going to be wrestling with this going, boy. Property taxpayers could carry even a heavier load, even if the district doesn't spend an additional cent. Hmm, and then, right, state budget, and then the politics around that, as it pertains probably to the next election for governor, there's, there's a lot happening.
How, um, you, you have a thought how you're, if you are at all going to tie in with. The Sturgeon Bay reassessment on how we present this stuff, a rule we. Will we just say, yeah, Sturgeon Bay's going to do reassessment, totally separate from us, you know, from what we're doing? Um, because, you know, last time, I think a lot of people had a hard time differentiating what was happening. Because it, it wasn't communicated very well.
Yeah, there, there was a surprise component, I'll say it nicely, yeah, since especially, right? Then city council members sat down with some of our board members, right? Because that goes back to the whole, when Mike goes to the joint review board meetings for it, right? Some different things that were acknowledged, I think, uh. Mayor David Ward, which one in particular that said, we can never have, you know, that type of reassessment sneak up on us again and. Surprise people and have so much time pass, which then leaves, right, all those types of things. And based on the meetings you go to or what I go to and talk with. You know, it's like, things are better, but there's still communication that needs to occur, otherwise, most of us, right? If you got the letter in the past week, as some of us did, right, your mind jumps to, oh, boy, where is this going compared to last time?
Yeah.
So I, that's totally separate, but acknowledging, you know, our people are dealing with all of that, I think makes sense. Uh, based on us, remind reports, just starting with the teaching and learning part. Uh, the team and I went to a conference in Lake Chune down in Greve Bay. Uh, following my report, I attached my notes, you know, not everyone's into that, but sometimes there's at least a couple of board members that just kind of like scrolling through. Okay, what types of topics are being addressed at these conferences that our admin team members are going to, aside from what you're using? Okay, what types of topics are being addressed at these conferences that our admin team members are going to, aside from what you're used to seeing in Jan? So I included that, if anyone wants to scroll through there, good old Doug Reeves, Mr. Botime was the the key keynote. It's hilarious, because he was a key person really in my principal years, and a lot of his messages, while some have had to tweak and update. He's talked about how it's fascinating that that keep it simple message and certain key things that the research reveals makes a difference, it's still true today, just like it was true fifteen years ago. Uh he did share, like, when people ask him, are you discouraged that some of the same things still need to happen now as needed to happen fifteen years ago? He said, not really, because, right, that's just life, and he just keeps on those messages. So anyway, the team and I went to the keynotes and a variety of breakout sessions, it was some good information that uh not only gives us ideas, but also reinforces that we're on the right track with, you know, key high kind of yield strategies that we're focusing on, we're not chasing the latest, greatest eighteen things, that doesn't make the difference. Uh scrolling through, I think I'll just go right to facilities, finance and operations, not that community engagement isn't important, but you've seen some of that before. Um Jake touched on, I think it was five different state budget level things in his report, plus some stuff with the what's going on at federal level. I thought I would just keep it high level for two. So on a positive side, really for tonight, you see the special education funding increase. All the entities kind of simplified things came together, that was definitely passed, right? On the, if you want to say negative or challenging front, that's that whole general aid, no equalization aid increase, right? We've been talking about that, we talked about it a month ago, we talked about it tonight, I just thought I'd put it in writing for those that uh track this. Um we've got a meeting tomorrow, uh on the Sturgeon Bay Rec Facility, uh to see right when the those uh feasibility studies and all those types of things. And then Donovan Group's still working through some things, the team and I sent them some info, they made some edits, and I saw Brian had sent, so I need to take a look, but. That's the end of my report for you tonight.
And I'm just gonna, I do one, one quick thing from the uh on July tenth, we did have a TIFTID district meeting uh at City Hall, and it's really, I think it's exciting. Uh it would be, it would be tid number six, they are doing an additional uh basically more, more parts to that tid. And um it's twenty seven point four seven acres of additional subdivision, really, that's gonna be like uh right on Eighth Avenue, kind of the north end of of where where uh we have currently developed parcel. Um similar to the, what's happened in Southside, Portside is gonna be involved in this, but anyways, really exciting. I looked at the whole plat, I mean, there's, 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 there's uh lower level, how was it, smaller dollar, affordable housing. There's uh, there's also going to be side-by-side duplex parts of that, and then upper-end housing, all in this twenty seven and a half acres. Um so that's, uh that's exciting, because we need, we need housing for people. So um we went over all of that, I I have a huge report that I could send you, if anybody's interested, let me know. I mean, it's common knowledge, city, city stuff, but um that, that uh, that's exciting, so. Uh that's it.
President Stefani, I would just want to remark that uh not everybody in the community thinks that that's a great thing out there.
Well, this would be, I I, from my point of view, it
Yep.
My, my opinion is it is a good thing.
Yep.
Mind you, because we need, we need, um we had an incident, like you talked about a few years ago, we had a teacher that was, that was for better part of half a year traveling from on the other side of the Green Bay all the way down and up every day, because they could not find anywhere to live in Sturgeon Bay. Uh you know, if we don't have places for people to live, they can't come to, whether it's the hospital, you had a doctor living in a garage a few summers ago.
Definitely.
Right, so you know, that, that can be problematic. So without a doubt, the fact, the fact that we, we have, I don't know why that is a bad thing, and that's also, this is also tax related.
I know people, I guess.
Uh I'm not, I I just know that there was a quite a few people from the community that was uh at at City Hall, um just mentioning that they didn't want, you know, that neighborhood to change.
Oh, they didn't, they didn't want to build that, like, in their neighborhood.
Correct, yeah, it was gonna increase traffic, those kinds of things, I mean, you know, if you, if you lived in a neighborhood that quit for you know, thirty years and it's been nice and quiet, somebody wants to drop twenty houses right in there, I can understand how that might be a little bit challenging. Uh I agree that we definitely need more uh housing, uh affordable housing, and I think that's a subjective term. Um and and I hope that uh what's, what gets built in that it um allows folks that would be employed by our school district to buy home.
From what I said, so I will, good, that's great, and and so that's, that's a good thing. Uh I just want to mention it, that's all I can, so anything else, or can I have a uh will someone give me a motion adjourned?
So.
Second. I have got Commissioner Sprick, second, I think, your Schultz, adjourned meeting, any further discussion?
I'd like to talk about this adjournment.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, opposed? Eddie and Jer, have a great night, everybody.